Call to order, the regular meeting of the Forest Hills School District Board of Education, our March 23rd, 2015 meeting. And before we even take the roll, I'm gonna take just a minute, do something a little bit different, and read from our strategic plan, our vision, and our mission. Our vision is success for all students. Everything we do tonight should be focused on that. Our mission is to provide educational opportunities that enable our students to acquire the knowledge, skills, and personal qualities necessary for responsible citizenship and lifelong learning. Would the treasurer please call the roll?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Here, sorry.
Here. Dr. Heiss?
Here.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The exits to the room are obvious to your left, the front of the room and the back of the room. And do we have a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Approval of minutes of the special meeting of February 14th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
This was a work session we had, among other things, where we worked on our priorities for the year. Mr. Tepper, please call the roll.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of February 23rd.
Moved to approve those minutes.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. We also had a special meeting March 19th. We don't have minutes for that yet, but I did want to thank the trustees and the park board for getting together for what I guess was called a historic meeting. Especially thank trustee president Russ Jackson, and also especially Josh Gerth for his leadership in helping us pull that together. Let's see. Item number four, correspondence. Is the superintendent, anybody correspondents?
Yes, Mr. Smith and the board. I have two pieces of correspondence I'm very happy to share with the board this evening. First of all, I just received this today, as a matter of fact, that Forest Hills School District via the National Association of Music Merchants was named as one of the best communities for music education in the nation, which is a phenomenal award. If you think about this, of all the school districts in the country, only 388 schools were nominated as such or designated as such, and only we were one of 25 school districts in the state of Ohio. So congratulations to our entire music department across the board, and again, congratulations for being so recognized as one of the best communities for music education.
Terrific.
Also, I also had a distinct privilege today to go around a couple of our buildings. We recognize our recipients of our Anderson Area Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year and also the Student of the Year today. We'll bring these two people to our next board meeting to recognize them publicly, but it really gave me pleasure to honor John English, Senor English, from our Turpin High School as our Teacher of the Year, and also as our Student of the Year from Anderson High School, Alex Stringfellow. You've recognized Alex's name. He's been in front of the board a couple of times for his work on lots of things that he has done, just one of the most well-rounded students that I've been associated with or we've been associated with. We have such great kids in our district that to find just one or to nominate and choose just one was very difficult. A team of educators went through all those nominations and basically with Alex Stringfellow and again, Senor English as our Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
Mr. Tepper, any correspondence? Next thing on the agenda is procedure for public commentary. As we've stated before, this is not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public. There's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Individuals who'd like to share their opinions or comments concerning a topic on the board's agenda should list an agenda item on the topic on a note card available from one of the ladies here in the front of the room, Mrs. Monk, including your name, address, telephone number. You'll be recognized during public commentary. Marks should be addressed to the board as a group, maybe within five minutes of time. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit will be adjusted. As always, if you have questions or issues about faculty or staff, that should be addressed to the building principal or the superintendent. Let's see. Next up is public commentary, and at this point, I don't have any green cards. Okay. I thought we were gonna have at least one speaker this evening.
No, I have green cards.
Yep.
It's my first time here.
Yep. Tell you what, we'll let you go ahead with that, and we'll move on to the next item. At this point, it's my pleasure to introduce our state representative, Representative Tom Brinkman, who is with us this evening to give a legislative report. Mr. Brinkman, thank you very much for being here. Lots going on.
Thank you very much. My name's Tom Brinkman. I'm the 27th Ohio House District member from this area. Was sworn into the house on the 5th of January for my, I guess it'd be my fifth term since I served for eight years before, from 2001 to 2008. We immediately were given the governor's budget, which included pretty drastic numbers for Forest Hills School District as for most of the school districts that I represent. I also represent Marymont, Indian Hill, Loveland, and Sycamore, along with the city of Cincinnati. I can tell you that that, those are, that, his numbers are dead on arrival. We're not gonna follow his scheme there. I can't tell you what it's going to be, but I believe it's gonna be rosier than the picture that he drew. Essentially, he felt that since you can pass levies, you get less money, so you can pay us more levies. And I don't think that's right, because we all pay taxes to the state of Ohio, and it should be distributed fairly. It also rewards folks who maybe aren't putting more skin in the game. The second thing that really was interesting was we worked on the Common Core solution. My campaign was focused heavily on getting rid of Common Core. I basically want teachers to be able to do their job, which is to teach to students, not to teach to a test. I don't like the Common Core standards. I don't like all the rigmarole and the data mining with Common Core. And we did introduce a bill that moved pretty quickly. It was actually the first bill that passed the General Assembly, and the governor has signed. It was House Bill 7. And it started to, it started the process by allowing parents to opt out of the Common Core tests. I know it gives you guys a little heartburn, because you gotta differentiate, but it was something we felt we had to do. We know we have to address some other things, like making sure that those who've opted out, their counts don't count in your overall grades. We are working with another House bill, which is, I think, 74, that will help do that. It's right now in the House, and it still needs to get a few more changes made, go over to Senate, see what they wanna do. But overall, the vision that I have, and I think the vision at least of the House, is to get rid of Common Core from the state of Ohio and join some of those other states that have done that. And, you know, really start moving back to, again, the ability for teachers to teach and not be worried about all the testing and all the stuff that you have to go through for all that stuff. I have had the opportunity to meet with Superintendent Jackson and the press, school board president previously, and talk about some other issues that were involved, but obviously, Common Core's a big one from, that I've heard from the voters. The final thing that I think is very important is that I have heard from you folks and others, the ability for high school students, seniors, to get college credit. And there's always a movement to shift that on to who's gonna pay for it. And the feeling that it's all gonna be thrown on you guys, I don't like that. That's not fair. I think if the governor wants it, we have to have, higher ed has to pick up some of the TAEB, I think some you guys could take, and I think some of the parents need to put some skin in the game too, instead of just throwing it all on the school district and you guys having to pay for that. That is, again, gonna be part of the budget discussions. It really hasn't come up yet, because we're still about a month away, and we're grappling with Medicaid expansion more than anything. But it's, we will get to that, and I'm certainly gonna chime in and feel that we need to be fair in that regard. So that's, that's kind of an update on the ideas with education that have been coming along. Certainly, there's always little bills here and there that you hear pop up. Somebody today was circulating a bill to bring cursive back. I don't know if they ever left, but to mandate that we have cursive, and I don't like mandates. Again, I don't like that, but to mandate, I think it was a 5th grade requirement, cursive. I know someone's been lobbying me awful hard to mandate CPR training of all high school seniors. It's not a bad idea, but again, the mandate aspect, and what's that cost and what's it do? I know there was a bill passed where we mandated that you have asthma inhalers in everywhere, everywhere. And I mean, not only in schools, but in camps, I guess, FitWorx and those types of places. And again, mandatory. So, you know, those types of things kinda make me bristle, and they cost, there's an expense. So I do keep an eye out on those. I can't say I can stop everyone. There's a lot of political pressure to take, and I've said this many times, as I'll close here, there was a young man who was playing around, as they're allowed to do, in a school up in Mason, and some tables fell down on him. It's back about 10 years ago, and he died. And so the idea was, we need to have a safety inspector in every school building in the state of Ohio. And I was one of the few people to vote against that. And I had young children at the time, young boys, and I felt for that. But again, government continues to close the barn door after the horse escaped, and the bill passed and was signed into law. And then Ted Strickland, as governor, a few years later, basically vacated and took it out of the budget, because he said, "It's hard to afford all that." And so again, it's tough to stand up for some of these mandates, and the resulting TV commercials and pressure that, you know, Brinkman doesn't like, doesn't care about the kids who are being crushed by tables, and I do, but it's, it's at what cost? And what we have to put taxpayers, the school districts, you folks through? And so you can count on me to take those hard votes, to stand up against those things, because of the resulting mandates that are put upon you. I guess I trust you to do the best you can, make the place safe, and accidents do happen. So anyway, that's what I wanted to sum up with. I don't know if you have any questions, if you wanna do that, President Smith, but I'm more than happy to take them.
Well, you actually hit the top three issues that I had, which were budget, zeros for Common Core tests, and the funding of the dual credit. I also appreciate you bringing up, even though it's a sensitive subject, but all the very special interests that want us to do everything for them. I know I testified in Columbus on a bill a couple of years ago, and I think I put together a list of, it was over two dozen different special interest opportunities that there were, and if we did what everybody wanted schools to do, we would have no time to do teaching. That's a little bit of an exaggeration, but not, not too much. So I appreciate, even though it's difficult to, you know, address some individually, it's a sensitive issue, but I appreciate the fact that you trust us to do what's right. Anybody on the board have any questions for Representative Brinkman or treasurer or superintendent?
I just wondered a little bit about the college credit. Two months ago, three months ago, there was nothing. And we have, we have a dual enrollment, working well, doing local control, we're working things, then all of a sudden, a gigantic mandate comes from the state. And I wondered just somewhat what the background, I mean, none of us, we had never, it wasn't even on our radar, and then all of a sudden, this huge thing. We have a couple of people that their jobs became figure this out, 'cause that's to be done by March. I mean, it went from zero to 60 like that. Huge mandate. We don't know where the money's coming from. We don't know, and it actually disrupted, as I understand, our program, which was very well-done, well-liked. We're doing it great. We're, you know, our local people are happy, local control, lower government, and then all of a sudden, this mandate from above comes up. And I just didn't know, was it the institutes of higher learning that pushed this? I mean, certainly the school districts that I know of didn't push it. I just don't know how it came about.
Well, I can't specifically answer that, other than the fact that I know that Governor Kasich has given the, higher ed has basically been in a favored position under his administration. And during his budget, he pushed on them the control costs a little bit more, and I guess that's one of the things they settled on. It certainly didn't come through the legislature or what we wanted to do. But we have heard what you just talked about coming at us, so that's why I think we're gonna push back when it comes to the higher ed budget. And, you know, we're, we're dealing with a governor who's got some higher ambitions and a lot of stuff he kinda pushes off and puts on overdrive, and then it falls down on us, and I don't know whether he's tone deaf or in New Hampshire or something like that. Well, I think he is in New Hampshire right now. But we have heard from you, and we are pushing back. But you're right, it just kinda came out of nowhere, that, you know, all of a sudden, again, I think they're looking, "Hey, we gotta cut 5%. Let's see what we can get back on the other side," you know? And that's, that's how they work.
Any questions? Appreciate you taking the time to share with us.
Thank you very much, and hope to make a few more of these as the budget progresses. Hopefully, we'll be voting a budget out in about a month, in about a month. Thank you, Mr. Fruman. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, if there's no objection from the board, we'll go back in the agenda to public comments. Hearing no objection, I want to introduce Matt Wagner, who has an issue to promote scouting, specifically Cub Scouts.
Here?
Right there, yep.
Well, thank you. Thank you all as well. I am the Cub Master for Wilson Pack 867, and it's been my honor to be involved with Cub Scouts. I'm wearing Turpin, but if I had Forest Hills just in general, I would've worn it. I've coached a lot of Anderson boys as well. I've got a freshman over at Turpin, and I've got a 4th grader at Wilson, and I've actually been involved in the leadership role for Cub Scouts since 2006, when my freshman was a 1st grader. So I've had the opportunity to be involved for a long time, and I've really had the opportunity to create just some lifelong friendships with a lot of the dads, and even moms, as it relates to being involved with the Cub Scouts. This is my last year. I've got a Weeblow II now, and he'll graduate to go in 5th grade, when he's in 5th grade, up to Cub Scouts, or Boy Scouts, excuse me. And so, one of the mottos with Cub Scouts, you know, besides do your best, which is for the kids, is always leaving something better than when you came. And so, you know, for me, having been involved now with the Cub Scouts for this period of time, there's been some change, if you will, in terms of how you can do recruitment within Forest Hills School District. And, and again, I, I just do what they tell me, you know, in terms of how you do that or what you're supposed to do. And so, you know, I'll go to the meetings, and I'll, you know, listen and get coached by the folks at the Dan Beard Council, and we're in the Blue Jacket District. And they'll tell us, you know, all the neat innovative things that you can do to foster recruitment, you know, such as roller skating, doing something at the carnivals, doing the different activities outside of the school. Now, what I'm not telling you is that when I first started at Wilson, we had roughly 112 boys in Cub Scouts. This was back in '06. Today, we have 63, so we're roughly half the size. We are actually considered one of the largest in terms of enrollment or Cub Scouts per student, if you will, for our district, for being Wilson. For instance, Summit Elementary right now doesn't even have a Cub Scout program, and it comes and goes each year, talking with the leadership over there. The reason why I'm here today is I really do not want to get involved with interrupting school, as you so alluded to, as it relates to all of the extracurricular or other activities that the pressures that come on to the school and all of our teachers. That is, that is farther from where I wanna go. What I wanna do is I wanna bring back what's called Scout Talks, in which we're not doing it during a time that learning is occurring. It would be during a time such as lunch or recess, so therefore, we can do a quick discussion. Two minutes, two to four minutes is all I'm asking for, to actually be in front of these boys. And actually, it wouldn't even be me. It'd be a professionally trained individual from the Dan Beard Council that would be doing it. I'd like to do it, but I understand, you know, there's some, some balance there that we have to account for. So that, that's why I wanted to come here. I wanna, I wanna leave the Cub Scouts in a better place than when I came. I really, I know that, I know that Forest Hills School District is awesome. I mean, I, I live it, I love it. What you just acknowledged today about, you know, I got a French horn player, I mean, it's, it's awes- awes- I mean, you teachers and principals are phenomenal. You know, early childhood development. I mean, Forest Hills, I think, is probably a role model for the state in terms of just what you pour into our kids. And, and I'm, I'm definitely a beneficiary of that. My kids are awesome, and a lot has to do with, with the, with the teachers and the, and the great group here. What I wanna say though, and again, just so that you can understand what I'm talking about, okay? When I talk about Cub Scouts, we're talking about core values, citizenship, compassion, cooperation, courage, faith, health and fitness, honesty, perseverance, positive attitude, resourcefulness, respect, and responsibility. Those are all key values that we want all of our sons to have. And the other thing is that if it was to be at a time when there would also be girls that would be there, we would, of course, make mention of the Girl Scout program, and probably give them a name or number to contact as it relates to that. So we would offset both of those things. So again, I know I'm interrupting a very busy schedule. I'm really humbled that you've given me the opportunity.
We thank you for your comments.
And thank you.
And your service, too.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, district update from the superintendent, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, I would, I'd like to introduce Joe Cuckel from our design team, SSOE, and he would like to share some of the work at Air and Sherwood. These are the two buildings that we'll be looking at getting off the ground in the fairly near future, and that's what Joe wants to talk to us a little about tonight. So, Joe?
Okay. Members of the board and administration, pleased to be here, and I think this will be a beginning of many meetings such as this. This is part of the process, bringing forth the concept design first, and from this point, moving on to the full-fledged design and construction document phase of the project. The two today are Air and Sherwood to present the concept. I think what's important is where we're at was developed through a process that dealt with a lot of, a lot of inputs, a lot of appreciation for everybody involved in all the sessions we had. We began with vision sessions right after the beginning with facilities, group from each of the schools. We followed up with another vision session with them, and then we went into meetings with the resource groups. Out of those initial vision sessions, and also several meetings with the administrators, the plan took shape. This is the plan for Air. Actually, they're very similar, and the, you probably, most of you have seen fairly familiar, so I won't spend a whole lot of time going through too much detail, but creating, again, the classroom areas, taking the, we call the classroom pod for each grade level, putting demising walls between the groups of four classrooms, and creating necessary corridors, serving security in terms of lockdown, the walls in addition to security, acoustical provisions of those walls, and also, from technology standpoint, putting walls in now allows us to put power in those rooms they did not have before. So that's key to that. The entry area, I don't necessarily want to point you here, but toward the entry, in this area, there'll be the security vestibule. The administration area will be up in that area also. Relocating the music room, and then art gets relocated. Actually, there are two ends of the buildings. A lot of that has to do with the circulation. That kinda came from the, the users of the school and the requests in terms of how students are dispersed. The blue areas are what we call the specials. Those are the resource spaces for occupational therapy, the OT, the PT, the ELL, also reading, reading intervention. And those are, are still in the process of being defined 100%, but that's the allocation of those areas in the air plan. In the end, you're seeing the, the green at the end are the kindergarten classroom scenarios. The upper ones are the ones that actually is the new addition that's going on in the building. We've met, again, with the, the primary, different grade levels, intermediate grade levels. We've met a couple times with some of them, kindergarten. We've met with some of the, again, the resource groups associated with art, music, media center. So again, a lot of meetings, not just for buying in, but to get information so that we could design it the way that it works best for the educational delivery in the building where they wanna be as we proceed forward. This is the classroom pod area, showing those walls. We're still kinda working out the final dimension of those walls and some of the aspects of those rooms, but in general, that's what we're creating in those areas. I see a similar thing on Sherwood also. Plan layout, the most significant thing here is we met with everybody that if they stood in the middle of the room or toward the end of the classroom area, still be able to see the other three classrooms within the pod range of four classrooms. And then the walls themselves, as you say, we're still kinda working out the final dimension, but that's where there'd be additional power and provisions to support technology, teaching walls, teaching services. We went through that discussion, still defining what becomes primary teaching walls, secondary. Working through a high level of detail that comes up next as we proceed forward, that we get into room by room, completely defining each of the spaces. The exterior, there's, go ahead and hit this. There's three slides here. You can kinda see a variation of the three, and we, this is one with community meeting became involved. We're talking to the community. What they really see and experience is from the outside, and the feeling, and we said the, we can have individual identities to these two schools. You don't have to look like the same from the outside. So there's gonna be a little difference. At Air, they basically like the, the, between the, actually, the next two, they like the glass up high, a little different canopy, so we kinda looked at that, and I think the last one, go one more. And again, we're not there yet, but they have less canopy, a little more glass up high. You'll see that when we get to Sherwood, it's a little more canopy, and not so much glass up, up on the higher areas. So again, we're still working with them in terms of that identity of the schools, but this is the direction we're headed. And then the side view, again, going back, the glasses to the front, so you just can get a feel for what the look will be. You'll see the glass, the glass to the side there. We're opening up more window into the cafeteria, which was very important, because when we, really getting light in the school in general is important. So getting light into the cafeteria, the entry will be pulled out, so there'll be glass on the other side also. And we're even talking about putting a skylight in the media center, so that that area gets daylight also. So really, throughout the building, there is a sense of daylight, you can see daylight throughout, throughout the facility. I'll go through Sherwood, and then, I said, there's questions as we go, or you can wait to the end, you see both of them, and it might work too, so.
We're not bashful. We have questions.
Yeah, okay. Similar plan layout. You can see the, the green area now to the left in terms of pre-K, early childhood. There's a little different demographics at school, and it's accommodated as we get into the specials, the intervention, the OT, PT, and some of the other specials, vary a little bit in terms of both schools, what was needed and what's required. So again, there's no need to make them exactly the same. We're still working on some circulation things with the school. The purple area is what we call extended learning areas, has kind of an open area where students can work in groups, and we set those up with learning resource centers. They'll be defined by pretty much the furniture aspects of it. Again, the music room down to the lower right, the art room is flipped in here from, from Air, and then administration, again, at the new entry with the vestibule entry. The old administration area there, which is also still administration, because it becomes the workroom, the teacher workroom space. Again, kind of the 3D look at the plan there. The classroom scenario, again, these two may end up a little bit different. We don't know yet in terms of what the walls are, a little different philosophy potentially... We don't know yet in terms of what the walls are, a little different philosophy potentially in terms of the teaching scenario in the four classroom pods, but that's kind of our next step, in terms of working through those spaces. But everything has been defined in terms of the basic layouts. Again, the same plan again, looking at that. The furniture just gives an idea. The furniture is going to be intended to be very flexible. So we're just showing a furniture configuration layout. There's a lot of opportunities for however they might want to team teach, and we, it's a little different at the primary versus the intermediate level, so we're trying to be accommodating that scenario also. The same thing, we gave three images here, and then the third one, kind of changed the colors around, again, just to show that we're looking for a different identity. And at the end, the last slide then, or the next slide, there's a couple of slides here. They kind of want more canopy, so we kind of pull more canopy. We may add still more glass up high. We're still working that piece out, but again, the idea is a little bit of a different identity in terms of the entrance to the buildings and how that might look. And at the very end, just pulling away further, and kind of get a sense of it. This is basically showing the next step. We're already working on, this is basic construction documents. We're working on laying out the hard walls, figuring out the hard walls, actually looking at the additions, working out the details, and that's where we now proceed to create the construction documents, that become the documents for bid, which we'll come back to you in May or June for approval on those.
Any other questions?
Just one, Joe. Both schools seem to be packed to the gills, and in the community meetings, there were a number of people expressing not only concerns about storage for teacher items, but also storage for kid items. Are you, what are you thinking about for storage areas, for the, especially for the classroom areas?
Actually, in the, we're creating some areas called resource areas, and particularly with air, which is the highest population, they'll show up right next to the kindergarten area, they're the blue area. But it's made to actually be by grade level, so spaces assigned to them. And we've also accommodated additional storage area that really hasn't been defined 100% in the old art room. So we've created quite a bit more storage within the facility. The thing we're proposing, though, is now to work it so some of that stuff, you know, can be out of the classrooms and in these other storage areas. So we are defining those as actual storage locations as we go through. We're going to work with, you know, each of the schools in terms of, we're going to quantify, you know, how much they have of each thing, how much storage is in the classroom, and how much can go somewhere else. They still need quite a bit in the classroom. We're working on a number of wardrobe units and all the different scenarios in terms of book storage versus cabinet storage. That gets into this kind of next level we're headed to.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
And how about additional space? I know at Sherwood, we actually had a little bit of capacity, but at air, we were pushing our capacity. I know the pre-K that we were looking at are all-day kindergarten. Are we putting some additional classes over at air?
At air, we have the extra kindergarten, kindergarten all day, and we've, you know, taken space. I mean, we're giving them more space to teach. We have now been able to increase the number of classrooms, still four per grade level at air.
But to be clear, you're adding building square footage.
Correct.
In addition to what's there now.
Correct.
So we are increasing the size of the building.
That is correct. Yeah, we're increasing out the front end to the side. So we're increasing roughly 2,400, about 3,500 to 4,000 square feet. So it's a decent sized addition we're adding to it.
At air?
Yes, actually, both schools, it's just what goes into those additions. It's a little different.
Other questions? I just want to comment. I know when we went through the bond campaign, there were a lot of concerns over who was going to get to make the decisions, or how is this going to come down, and who was going to decide what, and how is input going to be gathered? And I just want to say, what we're seeing is a culmination of many meetings, meetings with administration, faculty, open meetings, and I attended many of these and saw that you listened and came back with solutions to some of the issues that were raised. And so I feel comfortable, and I know the rest of the board has, you know, concerns to make sure that we're following through on the process that we said we would. And like I said, what I've seen so far is we're, the district is very much doing that, and you are facilitating that. And so I applaud, you know, what you're doing and the innovative solutions you're coming back with. Also, notice, one size doesn't fit all. What you're doing at one building isn't necessarily exactly what's happening at the other. You've been taking into consideration some of the input from the community meetings to be able to do things. I think they're going to wind up slightly different, but that's okay. So I just, you know, I think that's a good thing, that the way you're approaching it.
And we're still working within the budgets at each building, right?
Yes.
Yes. Interesting comment I heard from some of the people that attended the meetings. They said, gee, we're getting more than I thought we would get. Now, we haven't built anything yet, but I mean, but still, just the idea of what's being proposed is better than what I think the original thoughts were that we were going to get out of the budget. So, now, the challenge will be to you to make sure we deliver on that.
Correct.
But I appreciate it.
That is part of the next phase. As we've developed this concept, then we have, you know, continued to work with the budget. The main thing up front, we had those additions, the basically administrative area additions, roughly 1,500 square feet as defined. The other piece comes from the kind of additional classroom budget. So we had those classrooms off through the same corner in each building, comes from that pocket of money, so.
Any other questions? Any comments, Dr. Jackson?
Other than, if you take a look, I mean, that was just kind of the schematic design, but we're also looking at new and improved lighting throughout, new air conditioning controls, we'll actually be air conditioning the gymnasium. In fact, we'll be looking at that this summer at air. And then our goal is, is that once the design and the bid packages get put out, which is probably later, late spring, early summer, that beginning as early as this winter, late, late fall to winter, we can get our groups in here and be working on the outside of our facilities. These two buildings.
Additional community meetings are still taking place. I think they're published on our website. I would encourage anybody who has an interest, attend. I noticed some of the meetings I've attended already, there were people who had future kids, maybe their kids had already been there. So it's a community activity, and everybody's encouraged to come and participate, because it is our community, anyway. Unless anybody else has anything else, I'll say thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Look forward to coming back for the final presentation.
Moving on to the second part of the superintendent's update, I think Christine, you're going to be presenting this. Before you actually start, I just want to point out, you know, we did have an issue back in August or September within our district, a security issue, and we didn't sweep it under the rug. It was unfortunate, it occurred. And I think today, part of what you're going to be reporting on is some of the follow-up to the action steps that the district is taking as a result of a, it wasn't even, it wasn't even, it wasn't hacking, it was a simple human error.
Yeah.
That occurred. But nevertheless, I just simply want to point out that the district, you know, we didn't sweep it under the rug, and took action, and this is part of a follow-up to what took place.
Sure. I apologize, because for some reason, it seems to be off the screen. So we're going to have a security update. Just wanted to see if you were paying attention. No. As Randy was saying, situations come up. Forest Hills is just like every other company. If you go ahead and hit the next slide, 50% of companies will experience, or have experienced a security breach. That's one half. That's every business. If you go down the town center, take half of those. They have been exposed to a security breach of some type, and some may or may not even know it. So schools are no different than any other organization. However, there are some things that actually give us some additional layers of protections. So I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit today about kind of how our structure is. I'm going to be somewhat general. I don't want to jeopardize ourselves, you know, anymore by giving too much away. Go ahead and hit the next slide. So essentially, a normal security structure is you have the internet, and then you have a firewall. And companies have a firewall, plus they may have what's called an appliance or some way that they take the traffic and say, yes, you can go through, no, you can't. It's another type of firewall that protects you, and then it goes to the client or the computer. Forest Hills has a two-part security structure, because we go through HCCA, which they're considered our ITC. So they house all of our district data, and all of our true information system is housed there. It is encrypted, it is backup, it has disaster recovery, and it is, it's the powerhouse of security. So they offer a firewall for Forest Hills, in addition to access control lists and all kinds of other things that you may or may not understand.
Could you just mention what HCCA is?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. It's our ITC, and they have, how's that for helping? So they're essentially our data collection site. So they provide our services, if you're parents out there, Progress Book, they provide that service for us.
It's called Hamilton County Computer Association.
Hamilton County Computer Association.
Yeah.
Hamilton County Cooperative. Can we help, can we work on this collectively?
They're called County Collaborative.
Yeah. That.
That's the reason we're HCCA.
See? We just make it simple, and we go to simplify, and we'll say, HCCA is the ITC. I'm kidding. No. So essentially, they are the ones that provide all of our largest resources. They are our student information system, which we use to schedule students and do all the things that we do, Progress Book, to do our grades, and that type of stuff. It's all housed there. And they're essentially our Fort Knox of data. So you go through, and then data passes through them, and then it's sent to us, if it passes the test, to get passed there. So we have additional tests on our end. So we have additional protections. Go to the next slide, please. I'm hoping you can see it. Oh. So this is how HCCA mitigates the risk, and then I'm going to talk to you about how we mitigate the risk. They provide our web filter, which helps protect our children, helps protect our staff and everyone else. So that's an easy layer of security to say, yes, the traffic is okay, or no, it is not. They encrypt the data, which means if you would look at it, it looks like garbage. You would not be able to read it. If a layperson opened up a file, it's going to look like gobbledygook. You're not going to understand it. They offer encryption. They monitor our network. They have graphs and all kinds of things, and reporting, and things that they look at. They have what's called black hole routing, which is over on the far left. So essentially, they assess the traffic as it comes in. If it's not good, it goes in the black hole. It doesn't even get to us. And in addition is the firewall, which we already discussed. Go ahead, the next slide. So then it goes to us, and then this is how we mitigate our risk. We have antivirus. We have a system that as soon as the system comes on, antivirus, it notices that there's no antivirus on the system, it's pushed out. We have, offer two-step verification for our Google clients. We only offer that for staff. For students, it requires a mobile phone, but for staff, we're making that recommendation. We also have up in the left, it's called network optimization, and what that essentially means is something like Napster or BitTorrent, which are peer-to-peer sharing. We've given it zero, as far as its priority. It cannot go anywhere. No student can get, do any peer-to-peer sharing. It's called packet shaping. And essentially, it takes the traffic, it looks at the traffic before it sends it anywhere, and it says, hey, are you allowed to do this? It fits in this category. No, you cannot. So it gets zero bandwidth. So it helps protect our network in that way. In addition, we have monitoring. We can tell who does what when it comes to traffic. So we know where people are going as far as the sites, especially, we keep track of the peer-to-peer. We keep track of the VPN-type traffic. Peer-to-peer doesn't get anything, but VPNs, we keep track of. It's another hole for us if we don't keep track of it. We can do that through this technology. We also use what is called MAC address filtering. So what that means is all of the computers have a fingerprint on them, essentially. So this fingerprint, go, we look at the fingerprint, and we say, yeah, we like you. We say you're okay. You can get an IP address from us, or you can connect to the internet. So we have that currently, and that's how students are getting onto our guest network. If we don't have their MAC address or their fingerprint, as I'm calling it, they don't get on. And at the high school and at Nagle, we're using that technology. At the elementary, it isn't necessary, because we, they have our devices. They're already protected and on our network. But when you have BYOD, you open yourself up to additional risk. So that's how we try to mitigate our risk and to protect them, as well as protect our network. And so the students are in this network. We have this fingerprint analysis that's been done, they're safe, but they're over here. Our staff and anybody that's on our network is over here. They're segmented, and they're apart. And they're also in things called subnet. And I'm sorry, is, are we, am I kidding, or am I too up here? All right, very good. So...
It depends on who you're talking to.
So I should have directed that question over here.
I looked at Megan.
Am I trying to, I'm trying to give it in layman's terms, but, so we have what are called subnets, and what that means is Anderson has its own cluster of things. So anybody that does activity in Anderson is only at Anderson. Turpin cannot see anything that Anderson is doing. So even if a student has gone awry, and they're rogue, and they're doing things, Turpin is not impacted. No other district, or no other building is impacted, only Anderson. So we have that in every building. Now, some things can happen, and they have happened, where there's been a denial-of-service attack. And what that means is essentially, you're getting blasted by traffic, and it's blasting, and it actually blasts at HCCA. If there's a denial of service, HCCA catches all of that heat. And as I was telling you, they're our first layer of protection, that black hole routing. All of a sudden, it goes here, we're not getting any traffic at that point. They've absorbed all of the shock, but it's taken, we get no bandwidth, because the denial of service attack takes it down. So that's part of how we protect that part. We're also moving to what is called a radius server. And what that means is then I'll know, so if Natasha Adams logs on, I say, hey, I know Natasha Adams, she logged on, it was successful. I'm going to give her an IP address. So Chelsea McCormick logs on, oh, she's a student. I know this, because I know her email address. She's going to get an IP address. So we're going to start then looking at their username. So it's going to help us protect them a little bit more. They will, one of the things that we've struggled with in our network is that when students, if somehow they find out the secure network password, then they're over here, and they're swimming in this body of water. We need for them to be over here always. So by the radius server, anytime a student logs in, they automatically stay over here. So that's our next layer of what we're putting in, and it's actually already up, we just haven't deployed it yet. So that's how we mitigate our risk as far as protection. Go ahead. And I apologize that the slides are a little funky. The next layer is mitigating risk by housing less data. So as far as student social security numbers, there was a day when we housed them. We do not. We let HCCA do all of that work. We don't need them for the work that we do, we don't keep them. So it's just less information to have. If a security breach were to happen, we don't have to worry about that. Less threat of identity threat issues. So lastly is education, and this is probably the most challenging, because we, user behavior is the most, the biggest challenge that we have. Clicking on things that we shouldn't be clicking on, installing things that we really don't know what we're installing, but it looks great on the internet. Because what that comes with is they have all this malware and stuff just piggybacked on the back of it. They're installing the software, but they're also installing malware with it. So part of our, probably the biggest challenge, technology can mitigate some risk, but we can't alter user behavior. We can only protect so much. So this is something that we're going to spend a lot of time on. We have a cybersecurity team that we're forming, so that we can look at, how do we protect our parents? You know, how can they learn more about what their students are doing? How do we protect our students? And how do we protect our staff? And how do we help everybody to be just a little bit smarter? Anytime they log on to the computer, knowing what the students are doing, and what those risks of gaming and some of the other things, if you're not paying attention, you know, gaming is not all bad, but you just have to be aware, because when you have an Xbox Live or one of those services, you're all of a sudden talking to somebody across the globe. That may or may be a hacker, and they may not, you just don't know. So you've got to be very, very cautious. And that's, that's the security. Are you awake?
If I might ask, could you just take one minute, Christine?
Sure.
And talk about our external audits that we've done on our database, is it a lot And talk about our external audits that we've done on our database, is it a lot of the different programs we're using?
Sure, sure. We have a database company that helps us to look at our database structure, and to look and make sure that our security is up to what it needs to be, what we're housing, that everything, you know, there, anytime you have any kind of program, it opens up little ports. So we make sure that all those ports are tight, that everything is protected the way it needs to be protected. We only have the logins that we need to have. Those are all the things that we do, in addition to just looking at all of our software systems. We're trying to whittle down, you know, we may have started out like this, thinking everybody needs access. We're starting to kind of pare that down to who absolutely needs it and it's critical of their job function.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Sure.
I'm sorry that I don't know this, but how much do we pay HCCA? Do we pay them on a yearly basis to do this for us?
We pay them for services differently.
Okay.
So for the internet, it's about $50,000. And that includes the filtering on top of that. We pay them for Progress Book, we pay them for financial and different services.
And a lot of other schools around us use them as well?
Yes, yes.
So they're the?
They're, they're very good. And they, they also listen very well, and we've, we've had conversations, anytime security, as soon as they see something in the network monitoring, I'm getting an email. This is the IP address. We look it up, and because we have that fingerprint stuff I was telling you about, I can know exactly who it is.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So, you've probably said this, they're somewhere among the HCCA, ITC, VPN.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've got, I don't know what any of these. We've got kids that have Chromebooks, ours.
Correct.
We've got others that are bringing their devices. They bring in their devices, or they take the Chromebooks home with them while they're not on our system.
Correct.
Get on some site, pick up some of that malware or another virus, and bring it back and log into our system.
That's the view of Chromebooks, they're not getting malware. It is a browser-based system completely. It is, it is, you don't have the risk.
Because they can't download anything. All right, so what about the bring-your-own-device?
That's theirs, and that's what I was telling you, as far as that segment, that they're in this pool over here swimming around, they're, they're swimming with like people. We're protecting ourselves over here. So, and we, we make the recommendation for antivirus. We usually know pretty quickly when there's a problem, because they're into our tech squads, and our tech squads are removing the malware or the virus or whatever is infecting their system, because it stops, it starts functioning poorly, or they get pop-ups. So, we, we usually detect it pretty quickly. And in addition, when I was telling you about the monitoring and the traffic stuff, we watch that, so we can also see it. As soon as we start seeing a lot of traffic from one IP address, we look and see who it is.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate your explanation.
Sure.
I know some of what was done, was done in response to some community member requests from what happened in August. I also want to point out, though, that what happened to us was nothing like anything that would lead to identity theft or financial issues, like some things we read about in the paper where people are taking credit card numbers, that, that, it was some email addresses that were exposed. And so, we didn't have anything that was as serious as some of the things we're reading about. But I still appreciate the fact that you've moved ahead with appropriate measures to protect, protect our data.
Absolutely. And in addition, one of the things that, like I say, we've migrated our district to Google Apps, and all of that data is encrypted. So, it's encrypted both sides, and it's a much better protection than just saving it on your C drive or your documents. So, we just keep adding up the layer of protection, but we're going to have to attend to it, and it's going to have, it's going to be arising, it's going to have to have more and more attention.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on the agenda, item 7.3, authorization for law firm, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, at our organizational meeting, we look at and approve the law firms that represent us. This particular one is a name change. Ennis Robinson Fisher has changed their name to Ennis Britton. They've expanded throughout the state of Ohio, so that's a name change. And then the second is actually the addition of Grayden Head &amp; Ritchie, LPA. Grayden Head &amp; Ritchie will be doing some work there when it comes to our benefits packages, some of our HIPAA policies and those types of things. So we are asking the board, I'm asking the board to recommend that they approve the, are working with Grayden Head &amp; Ritchie, as well as the name change for Ennis Robinson Fisher to Ennis Britton Company, LPA.
I move that we approve Ennis Britton Company and Grayden Head &amp; Ritchie as legal counsel.
A second. Any discussion? Everybody can vote on this, correct? No issues? Okay. Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mrs. Visinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hellegar?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Moving on to board discussion, I don't think we have an official topic for this evening, but I'm going to take the privilege, I just came back from three days of a National School Board Association conference, and in just a couple of minutes, touch on some observations and some trends that I heard about. One of the key ones was just the impact of litigation at the federal level, and dear colleague letters from the Department of Justice, and I guess maybe, does that just come from the Department of Justice, or does it also come from the Department of Education? But the speaker pointed out that they're neither dear nor colleagues, but some of these things will impact us. It's just amazing to see the, the impact from, from some of these federal regulatory authorities, how that will impact us, the trickle-down will impact us in a significant, I would say, potentially negative way, budget-wise in the long run. Another observation was how important strategic plans are. And at some point in the not-too-distant future, oddly talking with our superintendent about possibly setting up a meeting for us to review and refresh our strategic plan. I know if you notice, our agenda is, does follow, every item leads back to our strategic plan in one way or another. And I think that's something that we need to dust off and make sure that it's current and that we're following that. Another trend that I saw was the interest in a longer school year. It wasn't necessarily always a longer school year, but it was more teaching, or actually more learning time. And that, there are a number of reasons for that. Sometimes it was to make up for time that's taken up in testing. Sometimes it's to cover, they had a fancy term for this, but where students learn, lose knowledge over the summer. And it's a way to, to keep them, keep that active. And just more subjects that students are trying to cover during the year. So, I know we've had some discussions about that, but I think that's another one that's going to be, that will impact our district in a not-too-distant future. Another thing that was presented as the future was blended learning tied to one-to-one. And this is something that, as you may recall, we just had a presentation, was it last month or the month before? And once again, I feel like Forest Hills is on the cutting edge of some of these things that they're saying are the future. And I really appreciate the presentation from Natasha Adams and Lauren.
Angeloni.
Angeloni, thank you very much. It very much showed that we were really out in front on those type of educational topics. Another thing that was being shared as something for the future was 21st century learning spaces. Learned a lot more about that here, since we just had our bond issue, but I think it's fortunate that we're going through the process right now, because they are presenting how important that's going to be for future education models. And so I think it's, it's lucky that we have the bond issue passed, that we're able to put some of that in place at this point. Another observation I had was really, when I heard some of the key sessions about some of the problems that school districts are having, and that we don't have in Forest Hills. We are absolutely blessed to have a school district where we're able to focus on education issues, instead of some of the issues that some of the rural, or urban, or even other suburban school districts unfortunately are bogged down with. The amount of parent support that we get, and what our parent organizations have delivered to this district. Other school districts, when I've talked to some of the people from around the country, they can't even imagine what we take for granted here in the Forest Hills School District. So I, I guess we're bragging on ourselves here, but I also want to thank everybody who contributes to that. Our faculty that delivers, like I said, when I hear about what goes on in other school districts in the United States, I just come back home and, you know, thank our lucky stars, we live in Forest Hills. Anyway, that was, I'll, I'll follow up on some of these topics at a future date, but just thought I'd share a few things, since I just came back today and was all wound up over some really neat things. Okay, moving on, we do have a consent agenda for items 8.1 through 12.3. Item nine, student services?
Excuse me, that would be 9.1 to 13.3.
Okay.
Change today, just so you know.
All righty.
Okay, and items 9.1 and 9.2 are overnight trips. The first is our teachers academies from Anderson and Turpin, traveling to Washington, DC, April 22nd through the 26th. The second is a motion to approve Anderson High School's DECA overnight trip to Orlando, Florida, April 24th through the 29th. There is an error in the student cost to this trip, and I've since corrected that for the minutes. The cost to students is $750, not $315. And I have also checked that there are fundraising opportunities for that particular trip.
What kind? $750 is a lot of money. How are the kids doing? Are they able to raise the money they need for the trip?
From, from what I understand, their fundraising is continuing. I don't know, Mr. Broadwater, if you have anything to add to that? But transportation will be covered by Great Oaks, it's air travel. They have offset, from what I understand, from what we have understood, at least half of those costs, which I think was where the error was, when we initially put 315. You have anything to add?
Importantly, no student, if you thought there was a student who was not going to be able to attend because of funding, you would be able to step in?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, and we assure that when they submit their...
Those are one of the, they're the heavier fundraising groups in the schools, so I do see that on our end, so they do raise quite a bit of funds.
Well, especially with these trips, because Great Oaks is supporting both of these trips, and they fund a great deal of these costs.
Thank you.
But at the end of the day, we know that if, no student is not...
Would be prevented from participating.
Thank you, yeah.
9.3 is our InfoSNAP services agreement and supplement. This is a student registration system that is going to be provided for our newly enrolled students, as well as our returning students. No longer will we be able, will we have to print paper packets for our parents, and previously submitted information will be able to be updated. We're very excited about this agreement and the supplement, which is in the attachment. The only addition that I need to make is that this is a service agreement and supplement for two school years, 1516 and 1617, which has also been corrected here. Our legal counsel has reviewed both agreements. And again, we are very excited about this tool. We have developed an implementation team, which will begin later this week, to begin the process of implementation for our new students. We will start simple and move into more in-depth types of form submissions and other types of services as we move into it.
That's the section 14 of the agreement, provides that it automatically renews, absent our prior written notice. And if it automatically renews, it says it renews without any of the discounts, which in this contract are significant, plus a 5% increase. So that's fine, as long as we diary prior to the end of the agreement, to make sure that we terminate or give a notice not to renew, and then have the opportunity to renegotiate those discounts.
Okay. I will make note of that as well. Mr. Eckert is having all of our correspondences with our, from InfoSNAP, when we will pass that information.
One of the benefits of having attorneys on the board education. Any other questions? Moving on to item 10, curriculum, Mrs. Adams?
10.1 is a supplemental book for language arts grade 10. It's Gallows Hill, and it will be on display in our office until April 27th, before your next, before the next meeting for your approval. 10.2 is a supplemental book for language arts grade 7, Start Something That Matters. It will also be on review in the curriculum department until the next board meeting. Item 10.3, supplemental book for grades 3 through 7, and this is Case Closed: Nine Mysteries Unlocked by Modern Science, to increase our nonfiction text. It will be on display until April 27th. Item 10.4 is a new adoption for English Language Arts Case 6. We recommend that the board approve the following adoptions for English Language Arts Case 6. It's a Scholastic Guided Reading, Scholastic Core Clicks, Scholastic Short Reads, and Rigby PM. Item 10.9 is a supplemental book for English Language Arts. This is grade 7, I Am Alala. And finally, oh, and that will also be on review and display in the central office until our next board meeting. Item 10.6 is a new adoption for Mathematics, Case 6. This is after a lot of hard work from our math course of study team. They have decided to bring forth Eureka Math as our selection, and will also be on review in our office throughout the month.
Any questions?
The Eureka Math, what is that?
It's, these are math resources, math materials that will be pretty much the backbone of our math curriculum. This, these are online resources that, that teachers have vetted and analyzed. We actually just got a review, this was a national review recently, of, it was talking about materials that had hit the mark with Common Core and had effectively addressed it, and Eureka came out as one of the top, top selections. So.
Any other questions? Moving on to item 11, human resources, Mrs. Carnhill?
In, excuse me, item 11.1A, retirement. We do see two teachers who are retiring here, Paula Berry and Kim Schwartz. Item B is a retirement, Karen Cochin. Item C is also a retirement of Joanne Simone, 10 years as a cook. And I know you may have read that a local school district, or heard that a local school district was losing 100 teachers or so this year, or, you know, at the end of this year. We are at this point about 20. We have about 20 resignations or retirements, so, which is pretty similar to what we've experienced in the last couple of years. Item D is a resignation. E, change of assignment. Item F, which covers G, H, I, and J. Going on to G is a, you would see, this is an appointment in certified and classified staff. Item H, our special services appointments, and this is for the 1415 school year. I'll give you just a moment to look through those. Item I would be the appointment of our coaches and advisors. Item J, substitute personnel. And since the board meeting in February, there have been some very minor increases in transportation and bus routes. And, you know, the district, it's very important to know that, you know, those kind of ebb and flow as students move in or students move out. So it's always little tweaks every month. The staffing level at the district now stands at 780.38 FTE.
Any questions?
I have a question. You mentioned the number of faculty members that are leaving. That's primarily due to the dramatic change in STRS, correct?
There is some...
Part of what's driving that.
Right. That, there are a lot of people who are making their decisions, I think, based upon the fact that we do have significant changes in the state teacher retirement system, beginning with the next school year.
Just, I was going to ask, is this then the last wave of people who would be influenced by that change, or?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on, business operations, Mr. Johnson?
Item 12.1 is the bid opening for the serving line renovations at Nagel Middle School. We opened bids on March 3rd for the renovations. These renovations are going to be similar to what you've seen take place at Turpin and Anderson over the course of the last couple of years. The total cost of this will be paid for out of this food service balance. So the motion is to approve the recommendation toward the bid to the lowest bidder in the attachment shown.
And that, we did have one bidder, correct?
Correct.
And, but you're comfortable, based on your experience?
Yeah. We've had, over the course of my time here, we've had several projects where it's happened to replace the auditorium for the Anderson, for example, replace the windows at Anderson Maddox. We had one bidder each time. So it's not unusual. We had two interested bidders. Why the second didn't bid, I don't know. KFI, who's going to be awarded the bid, has been involved in doing work in the project or in the district for two decades, and hasn't had a standing reputation.
Who's still 20,000 below your estimate, too?
Correct.
And you've had experience with these people before?
Yeah.
In this type of project, so we're confident that this is a...
Correct. KFI is the same firm that did the work on the pool ceiling at Turpin last summer, and very well done. And they actually did the same work at Anderson two summers ago.
Moving on to twelve point two.
This is a request to advertise for bid. This is one of our bond projects, will be air conditioning and the circulation or ventilation improvements at Sherwood. So we asked the board to give the treasurer permission to authorize the bids for that bond project. The work will be done this summer. Twelve point three is the bid opening for the same work over at Air that will commence this summer again as a bond project. Motion is to approve the resolution to award a contract, a low bidder is shown in the attachment. I might note, this is also, I need to kind of take a step back, when I was up here a month ago, this is the same project where I asked the board, we had a resolution to reject all bids, and, because they were, they exceeded a hundred percent, ten percent of budget. And immediately after walking away from this podium, there were a lot of questions, okay, our first bond project, now we're over budget. The budget was, it's apples and oranges. Every time we've walked up here, we're required to have a budget for a project. And by law, if the bids that we bring exceed a hundred and ten percent of that, we can't accept them. That budget really has nothing to do with the bond project. It's based upon the specific work that's being done that, on that project. What's interesting this time is three of the four bids are less than the low bid last time, and the low bid that we're awarding is within, it's less than one percent difference of what our budget was. So we're dead on as far as budget goes, so I needed to say that.
So that's interesting. Why, why are they so high? You have to reject them all, and they all come back so much lower?
By law, it says if they're more than ten percent above, we just can't take them.
I get that. So you set it out, and now we've got them all coming back lower?
Yeah, so it works. Part of the issue, yeah. Well, part of the issue... I didn't fight us staying up here this long. Part of the interesting thing was, is last time, we opened the bids, it was on President's Day. President's Day was the evening before all the snow, and people were wondering if we're going to be opening bids that day. And we had a lot of people showing up. We also had people who put seventy-five, put seventy-five fifty Forest Road into your Google Maps. It will take you to Summit Elementary. We had two bidders that went to Summit Elementary that day, who showed up twenty minutes late, and we couldn't accept their bids. One of them is the low bidder on the project that was rebid. So, you know, by sheer luck of Mother Nature, we ended up coming in about thirty-two thousand dollars less than what we would have last time, so.
That's all, that's the way it works.
It's just the way that it works.
Yep.
The last one is twelve point four, is the bid opening for the mechanical system upgrades at Nagel Middle School. This is the installation of the chiller and the boiler that the board awarded the contracts to purchase last time that we prebid, or pre-purchased. So the motion is to approve the resolution toward the contract, the low bidder is shown in the attachment.
Any questions? Okay, with that, we have items nine point one through twelve point three, twelve point four, and the consent agenda, the motion to approve...
We were going to actually take thirteen as well, so we're going to go with thirteen as well.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Yeah.
Thirteen point one, as we see different tax increment financing projects come available, there's a lot of, you know, complex financing and how we structure those projects. So we've asked Brian Seedhouse with Huntington, who participated as our municipal advisor with the bond issue, to help us on as needed basis as things come up, to make sure to actually handle the, some of the structuring of any financing that we do moving forward. So we recommend the board approve the municipal advisor services agreement that's in the agenda.
Any questions?
No, but I will point out, it's about, you said that it's good to have a term in the board. I don't substitute my judgment for our legal counsel. About the only thing I ever look for is our right to terminate, because if we've got a right to terminate, then who cares if we get into a contract, we can get out of it. And item, paragraph eleven, which is the right to terminate either party for any reason, with or without cause, so that's about the only thing I really do look for in these agreements.
And they, they will serve at the will of the board, so they're there to protect us. So I think they will serve until we tell them not to, so I think that's, that's a good thing. Item thirteen point two is the annual district insurance, our property liability, Arizona missions, and fleet insurance expires April first. We, again, with Berry Insurance Group, went to market, a little bit better outlook than it was in two thousand thirteen, two thousand thirteen, the catastrophic losses that the United States faced were over sixty-three billion. We were at thirty-eight billion, so it was obviously a softening of the markets. We had some better, better bids. One thing that Liberty Mutual did on our behalf, maybe on their behalf as well, but they did a full performance appraisal of all of our property. Over the course of the last fifty years, we've continued to go up based on inflationary increases and the cost of steel and the replacement cost. So their appraisal came in twenty-two million, twenty-two point five million higher than what we had. Of course, we have blanket coverage, which covers everything. We then negotiated and said we'd like to, in order to remain with them, they accepted that twenty-two million dollar increase in our market values at no cost. We had no claims last year, so it was an excellent year from that standpoint. I've given you kind of the breakdown. Our two main players are Liberty Mutual and Cincinnati Insurance, two of the leaders in the industry. So our cost per insurance was remaining unchanged, there's some small minor changes in some of the other coverages, which is a little less than one percent. So we recommend the board approve the insurance carriers per the attached summary through Berry Insurance Group from April first, two thousand fifteen, through April first, two thousand sixteen.
Any questions? Moving on.
And thirteen point three, I'll quickly go through. We have donations. Item A, our Anderson Band Boosters, were the large donor this time. And B, we have our statement of board accounts. We have three different funds that we're waiting on, some funding that's been promised to us. C and D and E are receipts and expenditures at this stage of the game. We're in line with where we should be and where we have been in the past, so I don't really see anything of any concern there. Our monthly bank reconciliations are enough. I want to note that, we said this, I think, last meeting, but on February eighteenth, we did settle with the bond sale, so we do have a hundred and three million dollars, which is a good thing, because we're starting to spend it. And so that is, the flow of that is, is at Fifth Third Securities, and we moved that over into our bond account at PNC to spend that. And G, we have our investment portfolio, which is our general fund investment portfolio, and hopefully in the next few months, you'll be able to see the interest earnings that we're generating. And H, we have our list of amendments to the appropriations. I, board service fund expenses, and J, approving a summer school cashier. So it's recommended the board approve this item, as well as the items nine point one through thirteen point three as presented.
For, we have a motion, any questions on the treasurer's report? I think your comment about the four thousand two hundred dollar donation by the Anderson Band Boosters just goes back to my point earlier about the support that we get from our parents and parent organizations. Any other questions? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda of nine point one through thirteen point three. So moved. The second?
Second.
Tepfer?
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hamblegarn?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Moving on to item fourteen, reports to the board of education. We'll start with the business advisory committee report. Mr. Tepfer?
Yeah, we met on March ninth, had lively discussion, I think, the topics, we had several, we talked history about border revisions, which wasn't very exciting, but we did talk about that a little bit. We did get into the insurance piece that we talked about here, recapped the bond financing, but really the exciting part, really, we talked about where we are with the facilities. We had a lively lacrosse discussion, as we discussed what that means to us as that program continues to grow, what's happening at the state level, what does that mean to us to accept more of that. Talked about board policies and having a cash reserve policy that came up during our bond presentations. Had some lively discussion on morale, because that was in the paper, and I think there's some discussions on that. And we also talked about the Anthem breach, data security breach, and what that meant to us and what it means to us. Our next meeting is on four twenty, so, and you were there, and we had some live discussion, and...
I appreciate the people who serve on the business advisory committee meeting. This is very much a cross-section of people from our community, differing opinions, very much diversity of thought there, but it's, I think it's very, very valuable. We've got some people that are really experts in various financial areas, that are able to provide input and constructive criticism to what's happening in the, in our school district. And like I said, I really feel like they serve a very valuable function for our school district, and I appreciate the work Rick puts into it, as well as Ray Johnson is always there, contributes, and all the members of that committee. Any questions from anybody else, comments?
Is that at seven on the twentieth?
It is. Moving on, Forest Hills Foundation report. Mr. Fruman?
March eleventh, two thousand fifteen was the last meeting of the Board of Forest Hills Foundation for Education. Highlights, Destination and Imagination took place on March fourteenth. That was the district competition, was hosted at Nagel Middle School. Ray Johnson was there from the crack of dawn until about six, seven o'clock at night, is that right? A full six day of work for Mr. Johnson, but it was, I was there for just two hours. But it was, it was really neat. The place was packed. There were teams from all over Southern Ohio and Northern Kentucky. The foundation sponsored twenty-two teams, I think, three? Moves on, Regals, does that sound like?
Three, four.
Four. Three, four. Four, thank you. It's just really great, and lots of kids, it's just really neat to see so many people coming to Forest Hills and a function like that being hosted here, so it was, it was really great. March twenty-first was yet another ACT preparation class, and there's another one coming up on May twentieth and twenty-second, one at Anderson, one at Turpin. Those are going to be full-day courses, taught during the school day, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. I think we're bringing in outside vendors for those programs, too, so it's a little bit more than what the foundation sponsored in the past. In the past, a lot of the functions, programs have been more test-taking techniques. I think these are intended to be a little bit more substantive, and if the return is good, I think the foundation tends to do that more frequently. The Forest Hills five K is on May ninth, registration's open, so everybody should sign up. And then the July eleventh is the Forest Hills Alumni Golf Outing at Still Meadow. And then last, the foundation has partnered with, I think it was, one of the, a group of teachers, maybe, that came up with a laptop drive. The foundation is going to be kind of the collection point, and Christine and others within her group are going to help us. I don't know if refurbish is the right word, but at least wipe them clean, clean them up, and convert them to Chromebooks, so that they're readers, and then redistribute it to students in the district. So, I mean, that's really great. If anybody has laptops that they think they're done with, donate them to the foundation. We'll get them ready and get them back out to the students in the district that can actually use them. So it's, it looks like it's a really great program. Any questions?
That was my first time I attended something, the Destination and Imagination, and that was really impressive. I went home and I told my wife it looked like organized chaos, but it was very organized. But anyway, it was kind of neat to see. Next thing, next item on the agenda is a report from the Forest Hills Teachers Association. I thought Mrs. Laver was going to introduce, but it looks like Mr. Farmer is going to be presenting.
I'm the substitute teacher.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm John Farmer. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Air Elementary, and I've taught here in Forest Hills for twenty-six years now. I teach science and math currently, and as a member of the Forest Hills Teachers Association, I am also an executive committee member, and I currently handle communications for the Forest Hills Teachers Association. So an interesting community connection for me is I've lived here for forty-four years. I've gone through all of the Forest Hills schools, and so have my children, at least as of the end of next year. I'd like to recognize the Mercer staff tonight, because they're here, and they are FHTA members year of the month, so welcome, Mercer. The topic that I'm here to talk to you about tonight are the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System and recent survey results that we've received from surveying our teachers about how that program is coming into place. So I'm, one of my other hats in the district is to be a member of certain committees, and for the last two years, I've been a member of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System core team, and that's a group of administrators as well as teachers. And we've come together with the sole purpose of trying to make a smooth transition from the pre-existing evaluation system to the new system, which starts this year for Forest Hills. Now, in this system, we conducted a survey to see how teachers were feeling about the beginning of this new system. And so here are some of the results that we, that we got back from our teachers. First of all, there's, there's three parts to the new system. One is the pre-conference, where teachers meet with an administrator, talk about the lesson that's going to be evaluated, and prepare with, through some discussion. That follows up with the actual observation that is performed by an administrator to monitor teachers and their progress, and then a post-conference, where they discuss how the lesson went, what some of the strengths were, what are some areas to perhaps work on, and fine-tune. So these are all things that take place as a part of this, this teacher portion of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. So in the pre-conferencing, one of the pieces of feedback we received from teachers is that they found that they were spending a large amount of time preparing for that pre-conference, not preparing the lesson necessarily, but preparing the paperwork necessary in order to complete the pre-conference. We had a large number of teachers respond that they spent more than one hour just completing paperwork associated with preparing to prepare for that, that new evaluation. And as far as the online site goes, the State of Ohio has a site for the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, where you can go and read the results of your evaluation, complete certain paperwork. Most teachers felt that that was a very easy system to use, that it was not at all difficult and user-friendly. As far as that first segment, the pre-conference, the biggest feedback we received from teachers, we gave them the option of multiple choice, as well as some open responses. And the biggest open response theme that we heard from teachers was wanting to try to reduce the time-consuming nature of the pre-conference paperwork, as well as to make sure that there's a consistency of expectation across all nine of our buildings, which, for anything, is, is our, one of our big challenges. As far as the walkthroughs go, teachers have administrators walk through, and they can spend ten to twenty minutes observing a teacher. They don't necessarily announce it, they just come in, sit down, see what's going on, and then meet with that teacher to talk about those results. Lots of positives about this. I think teachers would much rather you just walk in, see what's going on, and talk about it, than to go through that formal process, which is new this year. So as far as other thoughts, there were some final thoughts that teachers shared, and what came up over and over again was that they appreciated the administrator-teacher relationships that were being made from going through the process. As much as starting a new process like this is challenging, they were very gratified. Over and over again, teachers mentioned that they felt that it gave them an opportunity to establish a new and better relationship with their building administrator or the administrator that was evaluating them. So in closing, I just want to say that the Forest Hills Teachers Association, our mission is to achieve excellence for children through unity of purpose, and we welcome opportunities to further that mission within and beyond the Forest Hills community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item fourteen four, Legislative Liaison Report. Mr. Brinkman, or Representative Brinkman, covered the issues that I was going to talk about as far as legislative earlier in our meeting, and so the only other thing is, I'll be attending the OSBA Legislative Conference on Wednesday in Columbus, where I'll have an opportunity to get a lot more information about what's going on. to get a lot more information about what's going on, on all these issues, and have a chance to meet with some of the legislators, and hopefully come back with more information on where schools, public schools stand in the, in the whole process. Item 14.5, Policy Committee Report. Mrs. Bissinger?
Thank you. The Policy Committee meeting met on Monday, March 16th. Present was our Neola rep, Randy, Dallas, Rick was there for a while, and me. And most of the things we discussed are revisions that were required by law, but the one policy that is, let me go down, at the bottom of the list, there's a new one, that says Authorization to Make Electronic Fund Transfers. We're already doing that, but now we have a more formal policy. But the very last policy that we talked about was the Forest Hills Cash Balance Reserve Policy, and that was a result of the bond rating process we just went through. When our team was in Chicago, there was a suggestion that we have a cash reserve policy, so Rick and his group authored one at the request of the committee and of Dallas, and it's before you now, so we felt good about that. That's all I have.
Any questions? This is the first reading, so we've got the month to digest, and if you have any issues, I would say either talk to Mrs. Bissinger or Dr. Jackson. Or actually, if it's cash balance, it would be Mr. Tepfer. Moving on, Safety Committee. Again, Mrs. Bissinger.
Okay. We met on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, and John Eckert was all decked out in green, because every which way in his family is Irish, so that was a festive way to start the meeting. I'll touch on the highlights, and forgive me as I read my kind of scrappy notes. John started out by talking about the submissions to the state that we make as a district. There's an emergency management plan and a building map that were previously required, but now there are two new additions of an emergency contact sheet and a site plan, so we're complying with that. Ray reported on business operations. There have been a number of meetings for after-prom with the fire and rescue group. Ray talked a little bit about Destination Imagination. He said there were about 1,000 students last week at Nagel. Spring inspections are going on in the schools currently. Leah Beck talked for Saga. She and Karen Schwarmberger have been at all the spring sports meetings. They're, they are doing letters to juniors and seniors. The elementary kids actually write really cute letters to the juniors and seniors about prom, and how they want them to be safe, and they're still doing that. And she also, Leah also talked about that the heroin epidemic is also in Anderson Township. Steve Seaver spoke for Anderson Township. He stated there are three entities that can close roads, the city, the township, and the state, and sometimes there's difficulty with each entity speaking with the other. So he talked about the challenges of road closings due to flooding. There are, I think now, but it may be in the works, I'm not sure, flashers on Almeta and Beacon, the Five Mile and Beaumont Construction to improve, it's a continuous, as I understand, it's a continuous flow intersection that they're going to build, and that will begin this summer. Chris Wolfher, our district nurse, talked about CPR certification. 19 professionals were trained, all buildings are now certified, and there is a house built that mandates diabetes training. We will have all of our volunteers trained by the beginning of next school year. I'm almost done. We are now in the Navigate Program, and I think the board has gotten either brochures or something, a couple times in our, on our packets. It's better ways for us to communicate with emergency services. Safety plans are not public records, but it's a communications tool. The 911 operator, if the 911 operator's called, the 911 operator has immediate access to building contact information, floor plans of buildings, and there's also real-time camera potential. There are emergency binders with contacts lists and floor plans. Teachers themselves will have emergency, emergency flip charts on their phones, and there will be, messages will be able to be relayed through the app. What else? Betsy talked a little bit about mass incident preparation. Betsy and John are working with Hamilton County, and our fire department's setting up command structures, and Betsy said there is great collaboration going on. And then finally, SSOE, Joe was there talking about what we're doing with the bond issue, and he mentioned the following: security vestibles, exterior door security, camera locations and installations, better traffic flow patterns, access throughout the schools, and Alice, we're looking at lockdown capabilities. So it was a good meeting, as always, and I continue to enjoy serving on that committee. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question, John. I've been, I've been getting some feedback that the fire department has changed how they may view what we can do for after-proms. Do you have any, any feedback on that, or is it...
I think Ray could probably, he's had been at a few more meetings, but there are some procedural things that they're looking at, right?
Yeah, I've had several long discussions of the fire department. Basically, there were changes in the fire code that Anderson Township adopted in 2012, which applied to this specifically. And I also talked to the State Fire Marshal's Office yesterday, coincidentally talked to the State Fire Marshal today, who I actually went to high school with. And basically what Anderson Township was going to adhere to that code, and there's a little wiggle room, and there was some, there was some wiggle room granted in years past. So we've had that, had that discussion about after-prom, we met for a couple of hours on Thursday evening, a couple weeks ago, and had a very open, good conversation about it, so I think we left it.
What I'm hearing, it has to do with the amount of paper they can use? Is that what it is?
Correct. I mean, and fire code's very specific. And Rick, I mean, it says that they can only use, they can only cover 20% of the walls in a room, for example, and it's not, you know, 20% on one wall. It means, the code's very specific. And there was some latitude given in years past, and there really is not any latitude.
About 80%.
He kind of went through that. It was unfortunate they found out when they did, but to Rick's credit, Rick didn't really know what was happening necessarily before. And he said that there is potentially a variance that could be requested. So I talked to Assistant State Fire Marshal, his name's Alan Smith, very, very helpful. We had a great conversation, and he said, there really is no room for granted variance based upon the way the code's written. And the bottom line is, is that there's personal liability that the fire, local fire inspector takes on if he doesn't adhere to that code. So that's not anything anybody would want to, want to take. So, you know, we've worked through that, and we're moving forward.
Isn't there some, when we complete the upgrades that we have in plan for our buildings?
Doesn't change any of it.
I thought the sprinkler system doesn't impact it?
Does not change any of that, no. And that's, that was a misnomer as well. Because again, what you're doing is you're adding plantable material. So, the code's very specific with that, particularly as it relates to schools.
So who made the code?
Pardon?
Who made the code?
State of Ohio.
Actually, it's a national fire code. It's adopted by the State of Ohio.
Adopted by the State of Ohio, it was adopted by Anderson Township in April 2012, so I got the whole lowdown on it.
So while, while Ray is, is doing all that, as many of you know, my wife was one of the chairs for the Turpin after-prom for, I don't know, about 100 years. Only to have retired last year, but still on everybody's telephone and email lists. And suddenly, I became the legal advisor to the after-prom, and I had to research the fire code and... There's no room for wiggle, and while, while Ray, and it's not just here, I mean, I found the same thing going on throughout the country. It's that same 20% limitation, and you can get a variance, but good luck getting a variance, and even if you could, the insurance companies, you can't, you just can't get, your insurance is not going to allow you to get a variance. So it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work, and I, it really, really worries me about what's going to happen in after-prom in the future, but frankly, these people that have been doing this after-prom are so stinking creative, they'll find a way. I don't know what it is, but they will. They'll find a way to make it work, because they always do.
Yeah, the great thing about, the great thing about after-prom is, at Turpin and Anderson, it's, the schools are transformed such that you don't even realize you're in school. If the kids realize they're in school, still, I mean, they know they're in school, but if it doesn't seem like they're at a different place, I think the draw's going to be a lot less. And I know Anderson, I, I know Turpin has in the past too, have had some serious discussions about taking it somewhere else, but then, you know, the, the safety considerations of having it controlled in our district are sacrificed, so it's, it's...
Well, the neat thing is, I mean, just in my time here, we've not had any issue with any student, I mean, the only issue we've had over the 12 years I've been here is we got a student who was a little carried away and wanted to inflate, and it wasn't one of the high schools. That's, that's the worst thing that happens in 12 years, it's been a great 12 years, so... You know, the code is what it is, and there's, there's no room for variance, and, you know, like I said, Rick was in a tough position on that, so, you know, also, I see we've been taken on by the, by the rules, the personal responsibility for that, and it's not anything we wanted him to have to do.
Well, I, I hope that there's a creative solution, because I firmly believe that over the years, after-prom has saved at least one life in Forest Hills. Having been somebody who's attended prom before we had after-prom, and remember what goes on, and see what goes on in other school districts, I, I hope there's a way to keep this, and Julie, just as you pointed out, so that it is interesting and fun and attractive, so kids will want to attend, because I absolutely believe that has saved lives over the years. I'm seeing the principals nodding. Yeah, okay.
Except mine, where I'm home at 6:00 AM on Saturday morning. Yeah, and I think just in defense of the women and men who do after-prom, there's just such pride in the work that they do. I mean, and so, the new, for us, like every couple years, the chairs change. These poor chairs are like, oh, great, we're the year that we screwed after-prom. You know, I mean, that's how much they believe in what they're, when the kids walk in, the eye factor that they get from teenagers, which all of us who have had teenagers, you just do not get very often. They just, that's what they work for, that their kid walks up and goes, wow, this is what you did for us. It's just huge. But as much time as they've been in our building already, I'm agreeing with Jim, the creativity is going to be, if they're there every day already, just, you know, with the real, so we're all supporting them, and I know they, that they appreciate what Ray is doing, you know, just at least trying to fight their, their points, but they, they know everybody's on their page. They, they get it. I think they're just kind of a little bit heartbroken that, you know, you know, because they felt like it was always safe, I mean, and all of that. And they just don't want it offside.
It was tougher this year, because they found out about the changes so late. Both schools, and they've been working, they work, start working on this like the night after after-prom. They start meeting and putting it together already. It's, it's tough. They, they work really hard, and now they're having to change it.
And it's not inexpensive, so if you support after-prom, I would encourage you to, I don't know whether it's online or not, but contribute and make a contribution to both after-prom programs.
Like Ray said as well, we, we do know that that code was adopted in 2012, because we had other things in our building that we had to adhere to on a normal daily basis. And our fire department was just so part of the community, and not that these guys aren't, I'm not saying that, but they were just, they had been there for so long, working with these women, that there was a huge, you know, together, and this poor guy's kind of, we'll buy it for him. I wouldn't want the after-prom committee to...
I was uncomfortable sitting with you. Thank you. Was the Saga meeting canceled in March?
It was canceled.
It was canceled, okay. So I assume there's no report. With that, we will move on to item 15, Executive Session.
Pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G2, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes since disclosure at this time would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons who personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Mr. Hamelgaard?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. I will say that no action is expected when we come back out of executive session, and I would like to remind everybody that the next regular meeting of the Forest Hills School District Board of Education will be April 27th. Have a safe spring break.